Call the first organizational meeting of the school committee to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Could we please have a moment of silence for City Solicitor Jason Buffington? Thank you. Our deepest condolences go out to Jason and his family. All right. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mrs. Dougherty.
Present.
Mr. Souza.
Present.
Mr. Palowski.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mr. DeMello.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan.
Present.
Mrs. Almeida is present. Madam Mayor.
Welcome back, everybody, and welcome to our newest member, Nathan Palowski.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. All right. So this is the first organizational meeting, so we will begin by electing a chairperson. The person with five votes will be the chairperson, the person who gets elected first with five votes. All committee members were sent a memo from David Gay of Gay &amp; Gay Law Firm so that everyone understands the procedures that we'll be working under tonight. And with that, I will open up the floor for nominations if there are no questions. Mrs. Dougherty.
I nominate Gregory DeMello.
Mrs. Almeida.
Nominate David Souza.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. I'm just writing.
Ask that nominations be closed.
Thank you. Further discussion? No. Okay. I'm sorry. So, roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed. That was for the nominations.
Closing nominations.
Okay, so now we'll have the roll call vote, and we will start with Ms. Dougherty.
Gregory DeMello.
Mr. Souza.
David Souza.
Mr. Palowski.
Gregory DeMello.
Mrs. Almeida.
David Souza.
Mr. Fiore.
David Souza.
Mr. DeMello.
Gregory DeMello.
And Mrs. Fagan.
David Souza.
Madam Mayor, you need to vote.
The vote being three to four right now. I will vote for David Souza. Mr. Souza has five votes. And is elected the chair.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, we'll now open up nominations for the secretary.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mrs. Souza.
Mrs. Christine Fagan.
Any other nominations? Mr. DeMello.
Nathan Palowski.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mrs. Almeida.
Recommend to close the nominations.
All right. Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. All right, the roll call vote, we will start with Mrs. Fagan this time.
Mrs. Fagan.
Nathan Palowski.
Mr. Fiore.
Mrs. Fagan.
Mrs. Almeida.
Mrs. Fagan.
Mr. Souza.
Mrs. Fagan.
Mr. Palowski.
Mrs. Fagan.
And Mrs. Dougherty. Okay. The vote is five to two. Mrs. Fagan is the secretary. Congratulations.
Madam Mayor, one minute recess so we can shuffle the seats around.
No, we have to get seats.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. I have drawing of the seats next. So we will now do the drawing of the seats, and...
You have to say...
Oh, okay, great. So are we just going to pass these around and everybody picks? No, I'm just separating them because they're stuck together. All right, so pass those down.
No, Mrs. Fagan doesn't take.
That's right.
I pick? Number eight.
Number three.
Number seven.
Number two.
One?
And then you need to take one for...
Oh, this is Joe's. That's one.
Mr. Martin has seat number six.
Okay.
That's one.
That's one.
May I take his?
Let me see, I got the shot from last time. Wait a minute. Right here.
Who's got seven?
It doesn't matter.
I got one over there.
No, one's over there.
All right.
One is always over there.
All right. One's over there.
Trust me.
Shall we take a vote?
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so I got seven, so I move over to Greg is, Joe next to me.
Okay.
Everyone get their labels. Madam Mayor, I'd just like to have one minute of personal privilege.
Yes, Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to thank my colleagues for their confidence placed in me voting me in as the chair, and I'm looking forward to a great year in working with the mayor and the administration and here, and looking forward to helping the kids out and anything I can do for any one of you. My phone is always open, and feel free to call and contact me. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Congratulations, Mr. Souza. I'm sure we're in very good hands. Is there any public input? Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we will have the election of the organizational subcommittee, and I will open the floor for nominations for that. If there is no further discussion, no question.
Madam Mayor, it's been past practice that we elect the three senior members with longevity to the organizational subcommittee, so I'll make a motion that we elect the three senior members longevity, which is Mrs. Almeida, Mr. Fiore, and Mrs. Fagan.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
Just a question of where in the policy we would find that the most senior people have the prerogative to serve without election. I think that the policy says that we elect. Doesn't mean that the most senior people won't be elected. It simply means that the names are put forward as folks who are nominated to be elected. It's not a given.
Right.
So objective motion.
There's a second.
Okay. Okay, motion made and seconded. Is there a roll call vote?
Vote.
Okay. The roll call vote?
No, we don't have to roll call.
You don't have to roll call.
Just up and down.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two opposed. The motion carries. Correct?
Yep, yes.
I'll have to do a hand vote, Madam Chair, just for the record.
Roll call vote?
Exactly. I was going to request a hand.
Check questions to vote, that's all. So check questions to vote. This signified by saying aye. Mr. Fiore.
Actually, point of order, I do believe by law we have to conduct this on a roll call of names named. It can't just be an up or down vote.
Okay.
You can say list is read, or it has to be named.
Okay. Roll call vote, and this is on...
The organizational, yep, the organizational subcommittee.
The motion for the organizational subcommittee. Mrs. Dougherty.
So you're taking nominations, is that?
I'm taking votes.
No, we're taking, no, this is, the vote and the motion. The motion was, the motion was Mrs. Fagan to appoint to the organizational subcommittee, Mrs. Fagan, Mr. Fiore, and Mrs. Almeida on a roll call vote.
Further discussion?
Further discussion, I believe even though there may not be other nominations, people can make other votes, so...
Yeah.
But, yeah, the roll call can either include names or conclude list is read.
Okay.
Okay, so is everyone clear on the motion? Okay. Mrs. Dougherty.
So, actually, Madam Chair, you could accept the nominations. There are no other nominations. There are three seats to be filled, and we could do it by acclamation without, because there's just nobody else running.
Okay, I think a roll call vote was requested. Is that...
It's required.
Oh, required, okay.
Yeah.
You can do list is read.
List is read is all three people, so they can just say list is read.
Okay. List is read. Sufficient?
She passes. Mr. Palowski.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
List is read.
Mrs. Fagan.
List is read.
Mrs. Almeida.
List is read.
Mr. DeMello.
I nominate Carol Dougherty, Joseph Martin, and Gregory DeMello.
List, list is read.
Madam Chair, with all due respect to my colleague, thank you, but I decline.
I withdraw. Ms. Carol Dougherty, I nominate Mr. Joseph Martin, Ms. Christine Fagan, and Mr. Jody Fiore.
So we have, so we have four, list is read, and the check could vote at this time.
You have five listed.
We have five? I'm sorry. We're all set.
Okay. All right. The motion passes?
Yes.
And the committee, subcommittee members are: Mrs. Almeida, Mrs. Fagan, and Mr. Fiore.
Motion to recess to submit our subcommittee requests so the organizational subcommittee can meet.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Did Joe submit his already?
Call the committee back to order.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to go, colleagues, this agenda was printed up when actually the organizational subcommittee is in subcommittee reports, so we're going to go out of the regular order business to subcommittee reports, organizational subcommittee.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Madam Mayor. We worked very hard to try to make sure everyone got the committees that they wanted. It was very difficult because we had, not everyone filled the forms out the way that they should have filled them out, and so it made it kind of difficult. We ended up by having to call in Mr. Cabral because we needed a mathematician to help us out a little bit in our dilemma because we were always coming up one shot. But we did the best we could, and hopefully everyone's happy with their committees. So, starting with athletic subcommittee, our first person named will be the chairman of each committee. Fagan, DeMello, and Martin. Curriculum, Souza, Fagan, Almeida. Elementary, Palowski.
Please, Mrs. Almeida.
I'm sorry?
We're going to have a copy.
If I want to write them down, could you just speak a little bit more slowly?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
I'm on curriculum.
At curriculum. Souza, Fagan, Almeida. Elementary, Palowski, Dougherty, Almeida. Finance and Law, Martin, Fiore, Souza. High School, Almeida, Fagan, Palowski. Long Range Planning, School Properties, DeMello, Fiore, Martin. Rules, Fiore, Souza, Dougherty. Special Programs, Dougherty, Palowski, DeMello. Bargaining. I'm sorry.
The last one, could you please repeat?
Sure. Dougherty, Palowski, DeMello.
Thank you.
Okay. Bargaining. Cafeteria, DeMello, Fiore, Palowski. Custodians, Almeida, Martin, Souza. Tessa, Dougherty, Fagan, Fiore. TEA, Souza, Almeida, Fagan. TAA, Fiore, Martin, Dougherty. Nurses, Fagan, Palowski, DeMello. Every member has a chair of a committee, and every member has three committees. And we tried to do the best we could. So, thinking if people want to see the tallies, they're here. I will be turning them in to Mrs. Devine.
And, Madam, Mrs. Almeida, we're going to have, we'll photocopy them before everyone leaves and give them a copy, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to accept the organizational subcommittee's report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Next is superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So in your packet, you have my superintendent's report for this meeting, and I also have three superintendent talking points that I'll speak briefly about. So the first item in my report is just to remind the committee or to inform the committee and the public that the FY21 budget process has begun. Actually, the budget process began back in October, and here we are in January, and we are eagerly awaiting the House One budget, which will be released on Wednesday, January 22. So our principals have met with teachers, they've met with specialists, they've met with curriculum supervisors, program directors, and school councils to determine the needs of our schools and the school communities, reflecting the goals and their objectives in their school improvement plans. I know during my meetings this week with our principals during my individual meetings, we discussed the process that they were using and who they were involved, and I was very happy to hear all the principals that I met with again continue to state that they are working with their school teachers, with the teachers within their building, to generate recs and to identify what are those items and what are the needs that their school is required to be successful. So as I stated earlier, the House One budget will be released on January 22. There is a conference call scheduled by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. That'll take place on January 29. Mrs. Moynihan and myself will be participating in that phone call as will be listening to Roger Hatch and I believe Mr. Wolfson from DESI. They'll be reviewing the budget at a very high level with superintendents. So Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations Brenda Moynihan, she's planning to meet with the principals to discuss their budget requests. On January 22, school principals will present their school budget submissions and their school budget priorities to the school committee, myself and Mrs. Moynihan. We do have two budget forms scheduled for our parents and caretakers throughout the community. There'll be an AM session, and there'll be a PM session, so those who have daycare or those who have work issues, there'll be ample opportunity to attend a morning or PM session. They've been very successful in the past, and they've helped guide our budget process as far as identifying what our budget priorities will be for the upcoming fiscal year. I plan to generate and provide you with a budget message during the March 4 school committee meeting. So in addition, once the House Ways and Means presents their recommended budget, the Taunton Public Schools Administration will present the FY21 preliminary budget to the school committee on April 21. As we've done in the past, the budget is fluid. So as the budget passes through the House, the Senate ways and means, and eventually gets approved by the governor, it may increase, it may decrease, and we'll make adjustments accordingly. So that concludes the first section of my report regarding the budget timeline. As we've been doing throughout the course of the last year and a half, I've been providing you with updates regarding the four schools. Right now, three, but we do have four schools participating or partnering with the statewide systems of support. So currently, we have three district schools, John F. Parker, Joseph H. Martin Middle Schools, and the James L. Mulcahy Elementary Schools have continued their collaboration with the statewide system of support, also known as SSOS. So each school has been implementing their sustainable improvement plan. Taunton High School, who is no longer in the bottom 10%, they are still working with the SSOS team to sustain the improvements that they achieved last year. So the SSOS has been conducting benchmark progress monitoring meetings every 30 days with the instructional leadership teams in each school, also known as the ILT. There have been two meetings thus far, two progress monitoring cycles. The next round of meetings or monitoring cycles will take place in January, which Martin, Parker, and Taunton High School will conduct their meetings this month. Mulcahy will conduct their monitoring meeting in February. So what's embedded in the plans, or what would you see consistently in the plans? There's continuous monitoring and analyzing of key data sources such as formative assessments, cost failure rates, student attendance, discipline, guidance in nurse office referrals, and suspension rates. The implementation of social-emotional learning programs such as PBIS, also known as positive behavior interventions and supports. And we're also working to ensure that principals are getting into our classrooms, so we're increasing classroom observations. We're reviewing student work to ensure instructional alignment with the Massachusetts state standards. As you know, this work does not come without a cost. So for our staff to meet during the day or after school, it does require funding. So we applied for a $90,000 grant, and we received word on December 3 that we received the $90,000 to support this work in the four schools. So the $90,000 will again assist the IL teams to meet whether during the school day, which that provides coverage, or after school to compensate our staff for their time. The $90,000 will also be used to work with DataWise, which is a group out of the Harvard Graduate School, to help a specific team in each school analyze data in their schools. And also, we've contracted, one of the items that was identified that we needed support in was math support. So we've worked with Susan Looney, who was instrumental in helping the E-Pole School get out of the bottom 10% several years ago. So Susan Looney is providing best practices in teaching support, curriculum support at the high school, as well as our elementary school. And we also have funding to support the implementation of PBIS in professional development in the areas of math, writing across all disciplines. Again, I want to stress that writing is not something that just takes place in English class. That takes place across all disciplines. Book clubs and professional development for our staff, and again, social-emotional supports for our students. So last year, our schools were evaluated, or we had a walkthrough done by Schoolworks. Schoolworks made recommendations last year. They are coming back this year to visit our schools to see that the recommendations or see the work that is being done because of the recommendations, to see how it's playing out this year. So they will be coming back, and we insisted on having the members who conducted these walkthroughs last year come back because we want to make sure that the people who are reporting are the people who are there to observe and make the recommendations, so it's not new faces. So as a district, our extended leadership team, Mr. Barata, who's leading this charge, has continuously met to monitor the progress at each school utilizing district liaisons as a means of updating central office. In addition, we are reallocating resources to the areas of greatest need. For example, Title I, that is something that we are providing additional support to Mulcahy School. Central office representatives have assisted our principals. In several of our schools, we're conducting educated evaluations to ensure they are done in a timely manner and that our teachers receive the feedback that they need. So again, just want to keep you updated on the work that we are doing to support the three, four schools identified in need of support. And then several talking points that I just want to discuss real quickly. I am very, very proud of four students at the Martin Middle School, four civic-minded students who made a commitment and rallied, united their school to raise $800 for the Taunton Animal Shelter. The $800 will be used to perform medical procedures on injured animals at Taunton Animal Shelter. So I do want to recognize, and I'm sure you'll be seeing these young ladies in a future meeting when we do our special recognition, Savannah Maxi, Samoa Civil, Amaya Civil, and Ava Brooks. Very proud of these civic-minded students who are giving back to the community. Also want to mention that I am working with our new chair to schedule a long-range planning meeting. There's a letter in your packet that I sent to the city council to discuss central office consolidation and the utilization of Taunton nursing homes, so that letter is in your packet for information. And last but not least, I want to make the committee aware, and this will be discussed during long-range planning as well. Today, the MSBA opened the window for accelerated repairs. So the plan will be to submit two accelerated repair or two statement of interest, one for the Letty School to replace the windows at Letty. So you remember, two years ago in May, there was extensive damage, so that school got a makeover, but wasn't changed with the windows. So we could use new windows at the Letty School, and also at Galligan, which has a new roof. We'll be submitting an SOI, again, an accelerated repair for new doors, new windows, and we'll ask them to review the heating system at Galligan as well. And then when the core project window opens, we'll be submitting a core project tied to long-range planning for the expansion of the high school, which we discussed during the last long-range planning meeting. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things. Superintendent, how far advanced is the central office consolidation/Taunton nursing home plan? I understand that the last time we talked about this, or talked about it somewhere, that you were asking Dalahatung to design a floor plan. I mean, when does this get submitted forward? How did the city council respond to the idea of using the facility?
Yeah, I believe...
I support it, by the way, as you well know.
Thank you. I appreciate your support as always. So I believe because of the, actually, the city council is also going through the organization of news committee, so I have not heard back. I anticipate I'll be hearing back from the new subcommittee chair in the near future. I have done a mock-up, so to speak, that I will be presenting to the long-range planning committee, and then after it's presented to the long-range planning committee, we'll bring it back to the full committee. Mrs. Hatung and I have had discussions about doing some 3D dimensional designs, so you can get a sense of what it'll look like, but I do have a layout that kind of maps out where all the offices will go, where we can easily consolidate all of central office personnel. So to give perspective, I plan on having a map of the city of Taunton to show where all our offices are currently located, and then having the nursing home floor plan to show how we can fit everybody and still have space for special programming to accommodate the needs of our students.
So if I might, Madam Chair, I think it's a wonderful plan to the extent that we're aware of it as it grows. It is part of the educational complex of Friedman and Chamberlain. With the ball field there and a community garden there, it would be a wonderful spot for the activities that you're suggesting. So I look forward to a fully developed plan and certainly hope that the mayor will prevail upon the city council to support the use of that facility. Well, we'll hear about those sooner or later, I'm sure. And the second thing, I had the opportunity, I was at the Off-Broadway Restaurant last Saturday and had the opportunity to meet Mr. Civil and his two children, his two daughters, who we talked about here for the animal shelter. So they're going to be on the radio show on Saturday with Barry Sanders and myself, so you might want to listen to what they have to say about this project, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, thank you. I just had a question regarding the schools that are emerg- I just had a question regarding the, the schools that are emerging from targeted support, the, the benchmark progress monitoring meetings that are held every 30 days. Will there be report outs on those meetings that will be presented to us? Like, I'd be, I'd be very interested to see specifically the progress that the schools are making, you know, as we go through this process.
Actually, I can work with Mr. Barata to do a more in-depth conversation and possibly even bring some of the teams to a future meeting, where they can talk about their work.
Excellent.
And I can also provide you with copies of their plans, which I believe you have, you may have received last year. If not, I'll make sure you get copies of their plans, so you know the work that they're working on or what they identified as the areas that they want to focus on.
Okay. Excellent. Madam Chair, thank you.
So, I'm taking a motion to adopt the fourth-
Committee?
So moved.
Did we do?
So moved.
Wait, to adopt which report? Superintendent's report, I'm sorry. I said, for the committee. Motion to adopt the superintendent's report, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay, administrative business?
Staffing report.
Staffing report, I don't have that. Staffing report.
Do you place that file?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. New business. Okay. Mr. DeMello.
Madam Chair, thank you. I actually want to revert back to an earlier item on our agenda, which is the election of chairperson, and make a motion to vote unanimously to elect our chairperson, Mr. David Souza. That's item number one. And item number two is to revert to the earlier election of secretary and make the vote for Mrs. Fagan also unanimous.
Okay, so, why don't we do those as two separate?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, the motion was to unanimously vote to elect Mr. Souza as the chair?
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, a regular?
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you. And the next motion would be to unanimously elect Mrs. Fagan as secretary?
Second.
All those in favor, motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
So voted.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Okay. Any other new business? Mr. Fiori.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of the first of the year, we underwent another, one of the increases in minimum wage that are part of the phasing in of a higher minimum wage. I know last year, there were some classifications of employees that weren't in compliance, and the administration worked to, to bring that in line. I'd like to refer to the administration to examine if there are positions that are now falling out of compliance because of this latest increase. I'd make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On discussion. Just a question through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Fiori, you're talking about the non-aligned workers. Are they non-aligned workers that-
Also, some, some contract employees and stuff. There are, there are a few things I know are slightly out of line now because of the, of the increase, and I anticipate the administration will bring that to light and work on compliance.
So, I, I know we've talked about that, that list, that long list of non-aligned employees. I'm wondering if we might postpone action on this item, and I do support it, but I'd like to see what that is and what the cost is.
Well, that's the purpose of the motion, really.
Will you restate the motion?
All right, I'll, I'm referring to the administration to study whether or not there are positions that are now out of line with the minimum wage as a result of the, of the latest increase, and I'll certainly incorporate in the motion that you be given a listing of the non-aligned situations.
So, with a list of the positions that are not-
Yes.
-receiving minimum wage? Okay. Mr. DeMello.
Chair, thank you. To Mr. Cabral, maybe you can answer this. Can you give me an example of what we're, what position we're looking at?
Yeah, for example, the one, first that comes to mind would be like our crossing guards were paid hourly, our sub custodians were paid hourly. I believe during the last round of increases, when you approved the increases for the next three fiscal years, we accounted for that.
Okay.
Extended day, for example, get paid hourly.
Right, yeah.
But I will double check with Mrs. Moynihan, or I'll have Mrs. Moynihan double check and create a list. If we missed any, I believe we've covered, I would say, a majority of the positions.
I recollected that, too. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Any other discussion? Okay. I just want to double check with Mrs. Devine to make sure we had a second on that motion.
I'm not quite sure that we did, or was it Mr. Fiori?
Okay, okay. So, does anyone need the motion stated again?
Please.
Okay. So, and Jody, correct me, I'm sorry, Mr. Fiori, correct me if I'm wrong here. The motion is to direct the administration to study whether positions are out of line with the minimum wage increase and to provide a list of those positions that may not be in line with the minimum wage increase.
Correct.
Okay. So, there was a motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay. So, any other, are we still on new business? All right. So, next is unfinished business action item updates?
I finished.
Uh, Mr. Souza.
It's done on this case, it's done on here. Just before we get to the, just before we get to the calendar and the action items, Madam Chair, I'm going to go back and ask Mrs. Almeida a question. Mrs. Almeida, we, we made it to amend your motion. I didn't hear about the sick bank. We know who it is, but could, we need to adopt this part of your motion. The two people on the sick bank would be me and Mrs. Fagan.
Oh, so we think is the chairman and the secretary?
Yeah. So, I just want to make sure we add that as part of the motion for the organizational-
Oh, okay.
-for sick bank, so the sick bank is documented in the, in the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so now we're back on.
Yes.
Okay. Unfinished business, action item updates. Taunton School Committee Draft Planner, Mrs. Almeida.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been looking at the planner, and I think it would be who of us, since we have a new chairman, to have him review this with the superintendent and then come back at the next regular meeting with the new planner. That would be in the form of a motion.
So, is that a motion?
I don't think it has to be. I'll, I'll just take care of it. It's okay with me, is that okay with everyone else? Any opposition on that? I want to review this with John. Or any other suggestions? You can just let me know if you see anything on there that-
Uh, I-
Yeah, I just, I'm wondering about-
Mrs. Dougherty.
I'm wondering about parent university. It's not a school committee activity, but it is a TPS activity, and we don't have a date for that.
March 14th.
We do have a date. I have the flyer in my office.
March 14th.
March 14th. I'll, I was going to put the, I was going to put the flyer in the next packet, but we do have a date, and I will verify. I'm not sure about March 14th.
It is, because I got the refreshment.
Good.
All set.
Okay. Mr. DeMello.
Madam Chair, thank you. Through you to Chairperson Souza, are you anticipating moving any of the January dates? Because we're already January 8th, and these are quickly coming up.
All right, the 50th is definitely our next meeting, next week. I don't anticipate moving any meetings. The only question I'm going to have is, is can everyone make, if we keep the retreat on the 29th, that would be the only thing, is can everyone make it?
It's the evening affair, correct?
Yeah.
Evening, yes.
Yes, evening, yes, as usual. 29th, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I want. And I'll work, I know that, I have a couple of ideas for the retreat, if anyone else has additional ideas. I think today was the day we were supposed to bring them in. So, I'm more than happy to field those ideas, but I have a couple of ideas, and as always, it's, it's tough to get all the ideas in one meeting, but if we have one or two specific ideas, I think we could work with that, so.
So, you have my input?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Anything else on the Taunton School Committee Draft Planner? Mr. DeMello.
I, I don't know if this comes under this section, Madam Chair, but through you to Mr. Cabral, since we have a calendar of events in front of us, I don't know if this is the same thing, but under January 16th, the naturalization ceremony, is there going to be an invitation for school committee members to attend? I know we missed this last year, and if we are able to attend, it's in the middle of the day, so we need to plan with our employers and so forth.
Yeah, so you will be, all school committee members will be receiving an invitation very shortly, and I would welcome and encourage you all to attend the naturalization ceremony.
Great.
January 16th. But yes, you are all welcome to attend. I was unable to attend it last year, and looking forward to attending it, and I hope you'll be my guests.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Action item review. Mrs. Dougherty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm curious, through you, Madam Chair, to the superintendent, about the progress of the strategic planning process, and also about this Letty thing, the signage around Letty.
So, with the Letty, I'll start with Letty. I know Officer Williams, last time we spoke to him, he told me in his mind they were done, but I don't believe the signs have been installed yet. So, we do need to follow up with Officer Williams to see when these signs will be installed. But he believes me that all the process, all the process that he needed to conduct has been done.
Thank you.
As far as strategic planning, I am, principals will be, they're my individuals with principals. We talked about the work that I needed them to do with the staff to conduct the SWOT analysis. You can provide me with that data. I've had one meeting with parents. I will be scheduling another meeting with parents who are unable to attend the first meeting, and then I do plan to meet with business leaders. So, my plan is still to have the strategic plan brought to you with our new logo, which is going to be revised sometime in May or June. I'm still sticking to that timeline.
If I might, Madam Chair, Superintendent, would you give us information about when the parent meeting is and other meetings in the event that school committee members want to sit on the outer circle?
I would, I would love school committee members to actively participate in those activities in the event we don't do our own during the retreat. Obviously, it's your retreat, you should drive the work that you do during the retreat. If not, I would welcome an opportunity to conduct a SWOT exercise with you as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the, on the Letty signage, if I remember right, that went to the city council for an ordinance so they could put the sign up. So, that's where it's at. Now, it's at the city council level.
I believe Officer Williams told me it was done, and we'll confirm with him.
Please just confirm that the council actually passed that to an ordinance, because I don't know that.
Didn't we get a letter from Brenda saying it was done?
We did? No, I don't think we did.
We'll work on it unless they get the ordinance.
We're still on the ordinance committee?
No, what I'm saying is-
Mr. Fiori.
I'm out of order, but the sign division cannot put a sign up until, cannot do the work on the signs until the ordinance is passed. So, even if the ordinance is already passed, that doesn't mean the signs would automatically go up. They'd be in the process of making them and installing them.
Through you, Madam, through you, Madam Mayor, I think that part of that, part of that would be to check on the, whether-
Yeah, I, I think a simple phone call or email could probably clear this right up.
Thank you.
Mrs. Almeida.
If I remember correctly, some of the signage was on 138, and that's the state highway. It's not part of the state.
Yeah, this was issues.
So, I think they had to contact the state to get the signage up.
Yep.
And that was some of the holdup. I recall seeing something, some letter not too long ago to that effect, that they were contacting, was it D O, Department of Transportation or Department of B-
Yeah, D O T.
The one over on County Street. They were supposed to be contacting over there.
Okay.
I just sent that to you.
Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I mean, this has been ongoing for a while, and I'm not here to blame on anybody, but this is something that we need to address. So, can we get this back by next week, you think? Is that possible, Superintendent?
Get back the-
The, where we're at?
Yeah, I just, I just sent the communication out.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay. All right. Next item, critical items not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance. Seeing none. Next item, press, seeing none. Okay, motion to-
Dean?
So moved.
Most, I didn't get that. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone.